Ketchikan City Councilord, please call the roll.
Kus?
Here.
Harris?
Present.
Carlson?
Here.
Wilson?
Present.
Seivertson?
Here.
West?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take care, everybody. The first thing we have on tap is a public hearing on ordinance 141747, amending chapter 1112, telecommunications services and rates. Is anybody here to speak to those? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. That brings us down to communications. I think we had some light on the table for item 785 and 786. I'm not seeing anything there for communications. It brings us down to persons to be heard. Anna Shaffer, can you start us off?
Anna Shaffer, President of the Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council. I just want to thank Councilmember Zingy for sponsoring the resolution to support House Bill 75, and thank you all in advance for your support, which allows a large middle group of nonprofits to be able to participate in the Pick, Click, Give program in the future. Just wanted to express our appreciation as an organization for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anna. Amanda Mitchell?
Hi, guys. I'm back to talk to you guys about the form of nation, and I have some books for you. I'm sorry. This is courtesy of Susan Bigford down south, and I only have seven books, so I'm sorry. I don't have eight.
Give them to the council.
All right.
Read it to you. Thank you.
Also, I have some pamphlets about byproducts of form of nation, and it's called NDMA. I can't pronounce the long form. You guys can look at it.
Go ahead.
So, inside these books, they've compiled some studies that you'll get to see about the health and the safety aspects of form of nation, its ineffectiveness, the problems associated with it, the lawsuits, and its unregulated products. This is not all-inclusive, but it shows some of the newer stuff that they've come out with that they know is an issue. I wanted to talk tonight about NDMA. It is, the World Health Organization has said it's not a possible carcinogen, it is a potent carcinogen. It is a byproduct of form of nation. It is what the reason or the way they said that you can take it out is by not using the ammonia or by supercoordinating like what they do in pools. Why I bring this to attention is because NDMA and nitroamides are right now in the process of being regulated by the EPA, which many people don't know that they're already working towards stage three rules, which we will have to comply with coming up in the near future. One of the, the American Water Works Association is already looking into the possible effects for those that are using form of nation, and they believe that it's probably going to require those places that decided to do form of nation to rid themselves of the NDMA to actually switch over to GAC anyway. But with this, why I bring this to attention is because while this is kicking in, we will be drinking this, our kids will be drinking this. It is a potent carcinogen. And what I would like to see, and those that I'm working with, is that we consider putting a filtration system before harm is already done. And that's including, if you already know that our own KPU had said that we have to replace our rubber parts with formine-resistant rubber parts. That's going to cost our families and businesses money. We're talking about the destruction of pipes. It's corrosive, and you can't say that it's not. They've already seen it in different cities where it's in effect, even if it pH, it's going to occasionally go out, so it's going to cause damage. And that's long-term. It's going to cost us to replace our pipes in the businesses and homes. And when I talked about last week on being able to clean these byproducts out, so chloramine for itself is hard to rid. You can't use most filters, you can't use reverse osmosis, so the people that actually want to remove this from their house will have to spend more money on trying to remove it. And the NDMA can't be removed by most, and this is where I get to it. I talked to DEC this week about the NDMA, because the American Water Works Association has said they've already seen it, that when it goes into wastewater, UV systems don't even remove it, so it's going to be a concern. So even if you look at drinking water, in later regulations for wastewater removal, it's going to be an issue as well. Still in the works of going. But to give you an idea, if they can't get rid of in wastewater treatment, this is how hard the NDMA, it's hard to get out of our drinking water. So even typical filters that we're using is, we're still going to be drinking it. And so I think the long-term effects of this haven't been considered. And knowing this, maybe when this project started years ago, they didn't know this stuff, but as more and more people are converting and as they're looking into the byproducts, they do know that now. I wanted to bring up, I wanted to show this. Do you guys remember this way back in the day? It says, "More doctors smoke Camels than any other cigarettes." And at one time, we thought cigarette smoking was okay. I wanted to show another picture. These are little kids playing in DDT, spraying it on the street. They used to believe, and they wanted to show you how safe it was by spraying on kids and people playing in it. And just because people are drinking this water now, we know that there's bad effects. And going through with this project, it's just going to make a bad problem worse. We should invest the time. We invest our money into the hospital. We invest it into art. We invest it into all these projects through our town. We shouldn't cut floors with our water. If we know there's bad effects, we should put a stop to this and invest in our water for our future, for our kids, for ourselves. So I guess what we're asking for tonight is that you put a formal hold on starting the form of nation. I was going to say that I talked to DEC, Chris, or Cindy Christian, and she says there are no huge fines for stopping and wanting to start a filtration system for our town. There is none. And I have the email if you guys want to see it. My thing is that we could put a stop to this, and then I'm asking for you guys to put Bob Bocoff on the agenda to listen to what he has to say, so we can find out ways to actually solve this problem without going down this path that will actually hurt us in the long run. Who wants to drink a carcinogen that's known to be potent? We don't, why, you know, the other thing is that we spent all this money on the hospital for our health. You would think that we wouldn't want to invest in the long term so we don't end up with cancer or our kids. It's a genotoxic, meaning it causes damage to DNA, and there's possibility they're going to find out that it also causes damage to fetus as well. So I just want you guys to consider this, and please invest in our future. Thank you.
Any questions for Amanda? Thank you very much. Next, Ken.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Assistant Manager, Members of the Council. My name is Ken Tonges, 4650 South Tonges Highway. In all my years here, that's the first time I've been able to provide you with a permanent Ketchikan address. I'm here as the Chief Administrative Officer of P-South Ketchikan Medical Center, and when in discussion about the carhouse relocation, if the council has any questions for me or P-South Ketchikan Medical Center, that's why I'm here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
Hi, I'm Joel Jackson, representing the Keela Gateway Center for Human Services. Rosalie Nadeau, Ruth Mark, and I'm here again, like Ken, to answer any questions you may have about the agenda item regarding carhouse, and thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Joel. Now, is everybody on the list? Is there anybody else here that didn't get a sign up to speak to the council and would like to address the council time? Seeing none, we'll move into our agenda. Before we do the consent agenda, since we don't have, I need to, well, I got two things on. The Forest Service is seeking members for Tonges Advisory Committee. And I hadn't, I don't think we sent this out to everybody or anything. So, what do you call it? It's on the timber program with the Forest Service. If anybody's interested, let Katie know. She has a thing she can give you guys to look at to see what it's all about, but they're looking for a member from the city to be a part of it. And also, I believe I've gotten some notes from Sarah, if anybody's interested in serving on the Sarah Board. And I need, I need a replacement for Marty on the cooperative relations. Is anybody interested in cooperative relations? Dick, would you like to join? Good news, meeting tomorrow. Right.
Here.
Thanks, Dick. And if you guys want to look at that Tonges National Forest Advisory Committee, Katie will get the stuff to you. Thank you, everybody. Consent agenda. Let me see, I had a couple, not very many, but I had a couple of thoughts. On B2, the second reading, the telecommunications service rates, I was going to see if you could put on the consent. 782, 2014 police vehicle acquisition. And then any of the KPU 1, 2, or 3, unless you guys have questions, I'd put all three of them on there, but otherwise, none. It's up to you guys.
What was the first one?
First one was 6B2. Telecommunications, second reading, those rate changes. The police department, and then the three KPU ones.
What about 783?
I have no problem putting that on there, too. We got a question. And then in, anybody else? All right, let's go with those. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second. Madam, would you read items?
Approval of minutes, regular meeting of February 6, 2014. 2014 Ketchikan Fire Department Medical Director Services Agreement Renewal with William Anthes MD. Exempting the purchase of maintenance services from SUC Dynex from the competitive bidding quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. A whole bunch of liquor license renewals. And there was a typo on the next one. Resolution number 142540, supporting House Bill 75, repealing audit requirements for Click, Pick, Give program. Councilmember Zingy. Ordinance number 141747, amending chapter 11.12 of the telecommunications service and rates, second reading. 2014 Police Department Vehicle Acquisition. Award of Contract Number 1409, Roosevelt 4G LTE Antenna and Equipment Placement Hot Wire Communications LLC. Exempting the procurement of ADTRAN fiber to the premise equipment from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, KGP Logistics. And exempting the procurement of Brocade Core Network equipment from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, CDWG.
All right. Any questions? Call the roll.
Harris?
Hi.
Zingy?
Hi.
Seivertson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
That passes 7 to nothing. And that brings us down to unfinished business, 6A1, ordinance 141750, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Closed and Town Museum Advisory Board, second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council approved in second reading, ordinance number 141750, amending subsections B and C of section 276040 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Museum Advisory Board, repealing subsection 276040 entitled Museum Advisory Board to eliminate a scholarship committee and establishing effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second. And Marty, you want anything?
No.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I would like to oppose amendment that we do five members at large who may or may not be outside the boundaries of the city of Ketchikan, and it gives us the opportunity because there may be more people, less people out that want to be involved in it, and maybe people inside the city other than the five that we may have involved in, but it gives us flexibility. It still allows for members to be appointed outside of the city of Ketchikan by doing that.
Can you repeat that again, Bob, what you're doing?
Five members at large who may or may not reside outside of the boundaries of the city of Ketchikan.
And that's five of the eleven?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Move in seconded. Anybody want to speak against it? Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kus?
Okay.
Harris?
This is the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
The amendment passes 7 to nothing. Let's call the motion on the main, I mean, call the roll on the main motion, please.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
All right.
Wilson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that brings us down to 6A2, ordinance 141780, 48, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Closed and Town Levy of Taxes Provide for a 4% Consumer Sales Tax, amending section B, section 3.04.020 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Levy of Taxes Provide for a 4% Consumer Sales Tax, amending section B, section 3.04.040 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Tax Added to Sales Price, amending section B of section 3.04.130 entitled Use Proceeds of Sales Tax, repealing section E through G of section 3.04.130 and establish an effective date.
Second.
Move in seconded. You want to add anything, Bob?
No.
Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Okay.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Carlson?
No.
No.
Okay, that passes 5 to 2. Brings us down to 6A3, 2014 Community Agency Funding Agreement. We did pass up last time, but there wasn't enough money to do what we instructed in the motion. Somebody want to do anything? Go ahead.
I move the City Council direct the City Manager to enter into 2014 Community Agency Funding Agreements with those organizations and for those dollar amounts deemed appropriate by the City Council, including an addition of $1,960 to restore funding to the 2013 levels of all the agencies.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in seconded. Marty, you want to add anything?
I didn't add right. I thought there had been enough money left that hadn't been allocated to cover making like the path and the others up to the previous levels. I know my adding was wrong.
Okay, so you're adding $1,960?
Adding $60 to my debt. For more funding.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, because, I mean, we're, there was additional money added to historic Ketchikan. I've got nothing against historic Ketchikan, except, you know, part of what they're doing is to rehab a building that we don't own and cannot ever own, and yet we didn't fully fund, like, I think it was the homeless shelter and senior services for meals for the, for old people. So I just don't think that that was equitable.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Carlson? Yes. Harris?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Kus?
No.
Seivertson?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Okay, that fails 3 to 4. So do we just need a motion to approve the agency funding as is, or did we do that last meeting? I'd like to ask for reconsideration on that vote at this time. Okay. Move in second, vote for reconsideration. Call the roll, please.
Kus?
No.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Harris?
No.
West?
Yes.
Okay, it's back on the table. If you want to vote again?
I'm doing math in my head.
Go ahead, Matt.
Can you?
Take your time.
I'm doing math in my head.
Go ahead, Matt.
Can you?
Take your time.
No, I got a brain.
Nice screen, nice tip, I'll look down to you.
Chill out. So we need to decrease funding by 2340, right? In order to meet the level of the amount.
No, we increase it 19.
We need to decrease in, what this is saying, by 2340 in order to just meet the level that we had assigned, correct?
Right.
Okay, I'm going to do this in a series. I move that we...
This is an amendment?
Yes. I move that we eliminate the increase for Alaska Legal Services of $260.
Second. We have a, we moved in second to reduce Alaska Legal Services $260. Matt, do you want to talk about that?
I'm just trying to get us down so that we can, I, because I do agree with Marty, we've got some social services here that I think we can bump up to fill, and I'm just trying to get us down to that.
Well, I hate to do the work of the committee. Yeah.
I understand, but it was voted on and approved to do it to not to exceed that amount last time, so I'm trying to get us down to that amount.
Go ahead. Did you, did you want to say anything else? Bob?
Yeah, I, you know, I sat on this committee before, and the committee does a lot of hard work and goes through the headaches, and there's a voting process on there where they set the limit to these, to these agencies. And then, of course, I understand that's a recommendation coming back to the council, but I don't know why we put them all through that work if we're going to do a lot of second guessing here at the table. I know that one year we did it, we came back, and we ended up just closed funding everybody. And so I guess my, my concern is that all the hard work that they did, we're kind of nitpicking through that, and I have confidence that they did a good job, which is what they did, and they, they used the monies that they had in place. So I'm in, I guess, in favor of looking at, just leaving it at the original amount, rock back, and the original proposal, and go from there.
Deanna, Marty?
I just want to say that I agree with Bob's suggestion, and also that if we start nitpicking these things apart, we're just kind of opening up a can of worms. I don't think today will come when we ever make everyone completely happy about everything. And I do want to recognize the fact that council members who sat on that committee did devote a lot of time and attention to that process. Had it not come back because of this situation now, I could have lived with the fact that we gave some additional funding. But now that it's come back and we're having to, you know, reexamine everything, I just think that we need to stay with what the original committee recommendations were.
Thank you. Marty?
I think it's ironic that all of a sudden, the committee process is outside the City Council or Sac or something. Also, I, I think that there should be, it's the council's decision, and I think it's regrettable that we're not going to fund senior services meal programs at the same level last year, and yet we are adding additional money to historic Ketchikan, and that the money that was allocated by the council was not all used in the allocations through the committee. You know, that, that the homeless shelter and the, and senior services meals programs weren't funded at last year's levels just doesn't seem right when we're giving additional money to some of the other agencies that don't perform a service that's essential to people's lives.
Deanna?
I, I do want to tell Marty that I respect, you know, her thoughts and comments, but I do have to ask as well, were you on that committee?
Yes.
When these allocations were made?
Yes.
And all of them are valid in one way or the other. But that, but the committee that you were on, you know, made these decisions, and for whatever reason, those are the numbers that they came up with. I mean, I wasn't there during those meetings. I don't know what was discussed to, to come to these numbers, but I don't know how you can say that senior services, the meals deserves more money than maybe women in safe homes, or I just don't know how you start judging, because they all have value in one way or another. I mean, even Alaska Legal Services helps a lot of people in some really dire situations, you know, domestic abuse and those type of things that they need legal help with. So I don't know how we start weighing which has a higher degree of need at this point.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I was just asking to at least fund them at, at last year's levels. And I think we've proven that the committee process is not without review by the City Council, and I think that this is an appropriate thing for us to do, is to at least fund these agencies at last year's.
Julie?
I was also on that committee, and there was an organization that some of their funds go to Juno, and I think that some people on the committee felt that it's best to fund the organizations where the money does all stay local. And I think that, I mean, I reviewed and spent hours going through that binder, and I visited those people, I called people, and frankly, I stand by the numbers that the committee gave.
Anybody else?
I just want to say I back whatever Julie just said, not whatever she just said. I back Julie.
No, no, you said whatever.
Matt, thanks, Katie. Madam clerk, where are we on a motion?
There's an amendment on the floor, Your Honor.
Which one's, what amendment?
To amend Alaska Legal Services. You know, withdraw this.
The with second's been withdrawn. Matt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did. You know, bureaucracy is a wonderful thing. Committee work is just fantastic. Everyone loves committee work, and committee work can get overridden at any point in time by the overseeing governing body. And as a member of the committee, you have to go, okay. And that happens all the time. It happens. Every one of us has served on these things. The tax committee was one of the most frustrating things to me when I was on here, because we had a committee that, whatever we decided, came out of there, didn't, nothing happened after that. So I, I take committee work very seriously, but we up here are the last, are the last work, the last people setting policy. So I have, may I make a motion since I've started?
Well, our amendment has the second, I just want to let everybody know where we're at, so if you don't have, there's, what motions on the floor just then?
Just the main.
Go ahead, Matt.
Oh, did you withdraw the other motion? Because Marty withdrew.
Keep holding second. I'm withdrawing it, that's fine, because I think I've done that, and I need to just clarify. Bob? Bob, we, there's 2340 is the amount that we did not fund up to, right? Is the left over funds. Okay. Your Honor?
Yes.
I move we split the additional 2340 between senior services and path.
Second.
Move in second.
Which senior services?
Rendezvous or?
Senior care coordination.
All right, so we got a motion, it's consecutive. Anybody want to speak to it? Call the roll. Whoop, Matt?
That will take us to the original 358 that we budgeted.
Correct. Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kus?
No.
Harris?
No.
Seivertson?
Yikes.
Either yes or no.
You don't have that on there? I don't mind funding to the capital if we put that money out there and there are worthy causes, and I don't discredit all the work that the committee did and how you divided that money into some letters.
Is that a yes or a no?
And Zingy?
No.
Okay, that passed quarter three. Okay, that passed quarter three. That brings us down to six-eight-four. Financial systems for the replacement of carhouse in Akila.
So, substitute then for the main?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Defer from February sixth, two thousand fourteen. Dave, where are we at?
I believe that there is a motion on the floor from the last meeting, your honor. And since that time, there has been discussions between Akila and Peace Health relative to a potential alternative site.
And our motion was... I don't know, I'm trying to find that. Akila... Oh, and we never decided on a financial amount, that's right. Hey, Ken, do you want to come up? And Joe. So, what have you guys come up with? I had seen the letter about the Washington location and stuff. Are you guys agreed to something over there or not?
We're close to have an agreement. We wanted to see if Akila was... If it would be a building that could accommodate their needs and I think they spent the last two days reviewing the property. We are, though, still working on relocating all of our existing tenants. We have a solution for everybody but childcare. We have different options that we're working through. But again, I felt like, and this is just Ken's commentary, Peace Health commentary, that there was a chasm between what the city was able to contribute to Akila and what Akila felt like they needed. And knowing that we need that service in this community and that we had a property that might accommodate Akila and the carhouse, we felt it prudent for our community's best interests to step up and offer both this property and an additional hundred thousand dollars of support that would be coupled with what the city council was thinking about also contributing to Akila and would give them both a building and sufficient funds to continue to operate Carhouse for now and in the future. So, that was the basis of the offer and I can give you, Mr. Mayor, and the council assurance where we don't have a final agreement at this point, but we're very close, I think, to coming up with a resolution.
Thank you very much. Joe, where's Akila at?
So, again, we... As I mentioned the last time, we've been talking about a lot of different options. And this is one that sort of fomented after the last meeting. We've had our staff on site looking at the building. We feel like it is... It is a viable solution for Carhouse, that location. The building is ten years older than the current Carhouse. And as Ken mentioned, Peace Health is willing to put some money in to help renovate it. Our... With the city's... The contribution mentioned about the city...
Which contribution are you talking about?
We believe that we can renovate the building and make it a space that we can provide inpatient substitute treatment services. And one of the added potential benefits of that space is that it has flexibility to use the upstairs portion while the downstairs is being remodeled, which for us means we don't have to dislocate clients necessarily. We can scale back the program over a period of, you know, four period of time and remodel the building and we continue to provide services. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, so, yes, ma'am.
I don't think we're gonna ask for the amount.
The amount... Will the amount in the agenda?
The three hundred thousand.
The city was three hundred thousand.
Okay. That's why I was wondering what you guys were facing there. Yes, Bob?
I understand after the agreement that there still have to be some zoning and filling code, fire code stuff to be hammered out. And I guess I would like to see what the... What the potential cost of the remodel is before we actually distribute funds. So, I guess I would move to defer until your guys' agreement is settled and we get through the code issues. Because if it doesn't pass code and they can't do something there, then we're filled back to schedule.
I did have a chance to go and look at the code for how... And how that space is zoned. It's commercial general, which there is no specific code type for inpatient residential drug abuse treatment. There is one for hospital, which is a twenty-four-hour occupied medical care facility, which is in fact what we do in inpatient treatment. And that is allowed in that zone. So, there is no zoning, at least so far as I interpret the code, barrier. As far as the building itself goes, that's a fair question. We have that question as well, whether or not with the other projects.
So, I'm just saying that you're gonna have to have an architect look at it and decide what you can do as far as chopping the thing up and doing what you need to do to it. I mean, that's a reasonable assumption and then you're gonna have to meet present fire codes. I don't know what strength for there or firewalls or like and built to that. So, in order for us to establish a grant, it would be nice to know what the overall cost of that project would be. It may go up and may go down. I don't have any idea.
And that's what we spent the last day and a half trying to ascertain and I think we'll probably within, I'd say, two weeks.
So, I switch it to the next meeting?
I defer.
I would second it.
Well, when meeting to...
We can do it... They're not gonna have it for two weeks.
Oh.
So...
Second meeting in March?
That would be perfect.
We have a motion to defer to second with meeting in March. Do we have, oh, a second?
I was ready.
Okay. Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seereton?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that passes six to one. You guys will bring us what you got and see what you can do. All right, that brings us down to... Go ahead.
I think in Carl's memo, he did say that our divisions or building inspectors in the fire department would work with the organization to help further the salon, so I just wanted to make sure that that was appropriate.
Excellent. That brings us down to six B one, ordinance fourteen seventeen forty-six, adding a new section to the Ketchikan municipal code entitled water waste second reading. We have a motion.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve the second reading, ordinance number fourteen dash seventeen forty-six, adding a new section eleven point oh four point two four oh to the Ketchikan municipal code entitled water waste and establishing effective date.
Moved in second. Bob?
Yeah, we go back to these water rates that we're doing. Every gallon of water that goes through our plant, through our pipes, has a defined cost to it. And that cost, I mean, I understand that there's a direct cost and then there's an indirect cost. And conservation and the fact that if we're just not wasting water makes sense. And we don't have it, you know, we may not have a water shortage issue, but we do have to treat that water and it costs us money. So, I think it's appropriate for us to look out there and see if there are issues where we're wasting water that we can do a more conservative method and reduce the amount of water that's going through that plant.
Anybody else?
Yeah, you know, after talking to a few people and looking at this, I need to ask either the manager or the attorney, is there... Do we already have something in the regulations that would look after somebody that's just dumping water? Isn't there already something there?
Not currently there, so, which is why we needed to propose this one.
I guess you don't like more regulations.
Understood.
And I'm not... Whether we gain anything or not, I don't know.
And the... I'm sorry. Now, the violation of this is grounds to terminate their water. Is that the only thing we're utilizing?
No, I think that if, in reading this one, I think it does provide, if it got to that point where it could go to an assessed fine of five hundred dollars per day while it was going on, hopefully it would never get to that point and the decision would be made to terminate the water, you know, before you started finding it beyond that point. But both of those options would be available.
Anybody else?
That's the question then. The way, you know, we know the way the fish processors work. And I don't think they're the ones to be attorney here, but there's... The water's running. In our harbor department, the water runs over the end of the dock.
We have been... Well, in discussions, council member, we have been in talking with the fish processors, you know, through the rates and everything else who've been going through it. I don't see the processors as being the issue.
Okay. And our own harbors where we let water run for... Sometimes for a good purpose and other times for somebody just does something, why?
If it can be changed and corrected efficiently in a way that works, I think that's something we look at doing.
So, if we do it, we're gonna find ourselves, right? Or fix it.
You'd have to approve the fine.
Okay. We'll figure that out when the time comes.
Well, yeah, they... They talked about that water waste down there at the harbor and I did... Hashi brought me a thing showing one of those things that can, you know, shut it off at the, you know, depending on the, I guess, the temperature or whatever, turn off, turn it on. I think we should try one of those. I mean, something that's not just a cheap one, but a real decent one and see if it actually works well, because I mean, that's a lot of water. If it's... That's what they ever...
Steven, if we... Oh, Steve, talk to that one.
We have... Yeah, come along. Bring the crew.
Port Harbors Director Steve Cookrun. We took the last of those out several years ago because they weren't reliable. They kick on at thirty-five, you know, kick off till forty-five, so they'd run all winter anyway. And they were not reliable. And when they stopped working, the pipes would freeze up and we'd have a lot of damage we'd have to replace. So...
So, the only solution is to run the water nonstop all the time?
Well, we turn bleeders on. A lot of the water is users, they'll stick a hose in the water, they'll stick a hose over the side of their boat and they'll turn it on because they don't want... They don't want it to freeze. They don't want it to get off and on the boat to turn it off and on. We also have some people that like to walk through the harbors and just turn the faucets on. One in particular, we try to follow him when we see him doing it and we'll call KPD. And usually one good yell in a year will keep him from doing that again. But it's... We've got a lot of exposed piping, you know. We got, you know, six harbors and a thousand slips. You know, it's the biggest landlord in town and we've got a lot of water services, you know, and we try to take care of them, but we don't want them to freeze up.
Anybody else?
David Johnson, Keweenaw Department. We have tried using it as kind of a thermostat type of bleeder. You put it on it and when it's a certain temperature, it turns on, lets it run. When it's another temperature, it shuts off on our fire hydrant leads that are underneath the viaduct, try to keep them from freezing. What we found out was that they would open up and when the water is running, it actually warms it up a little bit because of friction or just the water's warmer than the air. So, it warms it up and then it cools off and it shuts off and it warms back up when it turns back on. It just keeps going back and forth pretty soon and it finally shuts off, it freezes. And it never opens up, but the lines froze behind it. And we actually had a couple hydrant leads that froze. And we were underneath the viaduct with steamers trying to steam them to get them to run again. We had contact fire department, we didn't know that they were out of service. So, at that time, we decided not to use those anymore. That we now just use a bleeder that was a throttle valve, so it's not running wide open, so we're not wasting a lot of water, but we're wasting enough water to keep the lead from freezing.
Thank you very much. Yes, Bob?
Could we... And I know it costs extra pipe and I think we're using mostly plastic pipe down the floor. Is there a way that we can put a loop in and have less bleeders? Are they all dead ends or?
Point in case, Crixtry. At one time, we put Crixtry as a loop, thinking that it would loop around. What happened was that, let's say, one user was only on one side, water wants to travel the shortest route, so it only fed one side and then it froze in the middle. Then we had to go down there and follow the water main and a couple services because it froze enough. So, then what we did is shut off by Old June's Cafe. And now we have a bleeder there to keep water running one way to keep it from freezing.
If we had a lot of people living aboard all over the place, that would work. But we only have them scattered here and there. So, that's, like David said, the system balances itself and it's only gonna go one way if you only have one person down there. We try to keep an ear out to see if something gets cracked open wide. We've tried to, you know, encourage our users to let us know. For example, just yesterday, somebody said the water was running pretty heavy at the end of float eleven, which we not heard and the guys went down there and a coupling had broken out, you know. So, they fixed that today. It was only doing that probably for less than a day. But that was probably a lot of water going out for several hours. Because it's not obvious many times when it's... When that happens, because it's water over water, in water, near water, you know, and not out in the middle of the street where you're gonna see a big puddle.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you, Joe. Call the roll.
Seereton?
Yeah.
Coos?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one.
That brings us down to six B three, ordinance fourteen seventeen forty-nine. Tower and land sublease agreement between the City of Ketchikan, Alaska Wireless, second reading. Do we have a motion?
Here, your honor.
You bet.
I move the city council approve a second reading, ordinance number fourteen seventeen forty-nine, approving a tower co-location and land sublease agreement between the City of Ketchikan, DBA, Ketchikan Public Utilities and Alaska Wireless Network LLC, providing for the filing of referendum petitions and establishing effective date.
Moved in second. Dick, you want to add anything?
Well, probably the same comments we had last time. This is pretty doggone expensive at what we're paying for it. And I hope that the other sites that we're going to maybe are more cost-effective, but I don't know whether they will be or not. And with that being said, if I... If we haven't seen it, I'd like to see a copy of where those other towers are gonna be located and what the estimated cost is gonna be.
Anybody else? Okay, so, Dave, what's the latest on this from the management side? I think we talked earlier and I forgot.
I've had pushing division manager, KPU, tell communications, latest from the management side of block contacts. The status of the project overall or?
Well, the people had the concerns about the cost and would it be more advantageous to get our own land or some of the things? And so, I just wondered if you wanted to address that, because Dick still has some concerns on the amount that this cost to lease, which I hear is pretty standard.
Absolutely. I wasn't here... I wasn't in town for that meeting, but I could hear about the comments generally. So, my general response is goes like this. As you may recall, we have a very detailed business case that lays out all the projected expenses, revenues, and investments necessary to construct and operate the CoreG LTE system. A great deal of the revenue associated with that system is contingent upon the system being online by May fifth, essentially of this year, in which we immediately start bringing in revenue from the Horizon customers who roam onto our network when they come in off the cruise ships. So, everything we are about right now is relative to getting that network up and operating in time for the first ship to arrive. As it relates to the deployment of the system itself, as a place to the business case and the projected investments and revenues, we always anticipated we would rent space on some existing towers as well as build our own towers. Case in point, we're building our own tower up by the landfill. We're investing roughly half a million dollars in that tower, all in. If we were to build out every tower and there were eight towers, that would be four million dollars and the business case falls apart. I don't want to go too far into the numbers here, because again, there's a great deal of confidential information inside the business case itself and we can obviously executive session at some point if that's your desire. But I can tell you that everything we're doing at this point relative to building versus leasing is completely in keeping with the original business case.
Sounds good. Bob?
So... So, the tower that we're talking about right here now on Roosevelt Drive, it's not a sophisticated tower like we're putting on, it's a pole, right?
That is correct.
And my only concern is this is gonna be a... After a number of years, it's gonna be up to quarter million dollars. It has a three and a half percent increase every year on the rental.
Sure.
And I just... I just don't see how... And I understand that this is renewable every five years. I would hope that we'd be looking at another site, put our own wooden pole up if necessary.
Yeah.
I understand if you want to get this thing in the process and up and running and I'm fine with that, but as a long-term investment, this doesn't seem sound.
All in, of course, it always depends upon the cost of acquisition of land and whether you have to put up a mono pole as opposed to a simple wooden pole. But though the point of, uh, the manner in which we negotiated these leases relative to the five-year, the ability to extend five years, is to give us, to do exactly what you're suggesting, which is get the system in service. Ensure that we have that first five years locked, locked down. But then we have, we have the ability, as we see the revenue come in over the first three or four or five years, to make those decisions about, do we really want to extend the lease on this tower or that tower? Or should we build out this one now that we have sufficient cash flow coming in and, and it makes sense to, to do it? What this does is secures the option going forward, as opposed to if we don't sign a contract that has multiple opportunities for extensions, we've kind of guaranteed the certainty that four years out, we're going to have to come up with X hundred thousands of dollars to build out a, a tower somewhere, or sign much more expensive, as, as the L C says. So this gives us the flexibility.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, call the room.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Severson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven nothing. That brings us down to seven A one, general government demolition of former Raptor Center and other buildings by city staff. Do we have a motion? You've got a choice. Go ahead.
I move the City Council, Director City Manager, to solicit bids from local qualified contractors for the demolition of the former Raptor Center at the Deer Mountain Hatchet.
We're in second. Marty, do you want to add anything?
Uh, the other alternative to have city staff do it would, would place a, quite a burden on, on public works to have people, uh, doing that work when there's other, lots of other city work that needs to be done.
Anybody else? Call the room.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Wilson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Kus?
Okay.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes seven nothing. That brings us down to seven A three, Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Fixtures Furniture and Equipment Agreement with Peace Health. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Honor.
Go ahead.
I'm with the City Council, authorize the City Manager to execute contract number fourteen dash eleven with Peace Health Ketchikan Medical Center for the fixture, furniture, and equipment to be provided by Peace Health in the amount of not less than eight million dollars.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We're in second, and Bob?
I don't know, I invite Ken to talk about what we're doing here.
Ken, you want to add anything?
Not really, I think, I don't think there's going to be, I don't think there's going to be any problem at least spending eight million dollars on this, so I'm very comfortable with this agreement.
Thank you very much. Call the, well, Marty?
I, I work for Ketchikan Medical Center. I don't have any, uh, I won't make any money off this or anything, but just to, you know, people know that's where I work.
Go to wait. Call the room.
No.
Oh, sorry, hold on, hold on, hands. Start with that. Always lean to the right.
Um, section one, paragraph C, I had a question on it. Makes it sound like, uh, the routine capital FF and E, which was not to exceed or estimated to be four point six million dollars, was partly funded or funded by state grants and the city bond. Is that not true or true? I, I mean, I could just be reading it wrong. But it makes it sound like that's the case and that it's going to be the property of Peace Health.
Cliff Allen, Public Works Director. Let me catch up to you, what section?
Uh, page two, section C.
Page two, section C. Of the, the actual agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just let me know if it's, um, all misjudged or providing a misrule.
Yeah, I think what that refers to is, this does not include all the capital that we plan on spending. We have another bucket called our routine capital replacement, which is not part of the FF and E agreement with the city. That's something separate. That's the result of the new project, that we're going to spend at least eight million. I think what we wanted to say is that, in addition to that, we're also going to continue our normal routine capital, uh, process, which is, you know, Barrett, depending on whether we're replacing an expensive imaging equipment or something like that, could be anywhere, you know, it could be anywhere from a million to four million dollars per year. But it's averaged a little over two million.
Right, but this, just, I think I probably just need clarification. It seems like it's saying that the city bond or state grants are paying for that.
Of the four point six?
Yeah.
No, I, those are non-project costs.
Okay.
Uh, the reason we're in this agreement is to coordinate and ensure coordination. Uh, if it's a non-project cost for us, it's a, really a non-project cost for you outside the eight million. What was your term again? Routine capital investment. So they may or may not bring these investments in, but the reason it's in this agreement is that if they do come in, there's close, um, coordination between the contractor and the provider.
I just, reading that, it made it sound like the state or the city was paying for stuff that Peace Health would then have ownership of, and so that would, so if, if they won't, then that was my question, thank you.
Dan, did you have a question? Judy?
Um, I don't have a question, I just want to state that, uh, the Plaza does have a lease agreement with Peace Health. I don't stand to gain any, anything first lien from that.
No problem, go to wait. Call the room, please.
Kus?
Yeah.
Severson?
Yeah.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
West?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven nothing. Brings us down to seven A four, continuation of the Centennial Building Roof Design, Welsh Whitley Architects. Do we have a motion? Um. Five minutes. Thank you. Session, we're talking about the continuation of the Centennial Building Roof Design, Welsh Whitley Architects. Um, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Honor.
Go ahead.
I'm with the City Council, authorize the design of Centennial Building Roof to proceed based on the both slope tapered insulation system recommended by Welsh Whitley Architects, as detailed in the Assistant City Manager Report February eleven, twenty fourteen.
Second. All right, Bob, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to know why such a large spread in the cost, uh, three hundred thousand, uh, what was it?
Three twenty.
Yeah.
That's for the construction.
That, that's.
Forty-two for the design.
Cliff Allen again, Public Works and Engineering. Uh, I'll take a shot at this one. The, uh, the real difference is that, uh, we would take off the membrane, if you will, and put a new membrane on. It's not quite that simple, but that's where the, the basic cost is for the roof. The differential you see for that, uh, the pitch roof being so much more, is largely, uh, the type of instruction of the, uh, not the Raptor Center, where are we, Centennial Building. Have a hard time keeping up, I'm sorry. If you, if you scroll down into the memo from our architect, and Tim is here if need be, it shows a cross-section sketch of the, uh, I think it's the very last page. And if you look at that, the unusual design of that mansard roof, um, and the cant lever of the, uh, of the structure does not lend itself to a simple, um, box type of construction like, uh, like other buildings. This building that we're in, for instance, we have a square wall, um, ostensibly, you could just set a truss right on top of that, that wall. You cannot do that with this one.
Well, one of the things here, Honor, option two, the tear off the low slope and, uh, EPDM membrane, it's estimated, you know, between thirty-five and forty-five dollars per square foot, and so the cost is two forty-five to three fifteen. And I just wondered if that, uh, you know, if we can get a little more defined number on that, I guess. Is that all based on the time that you buy it and when the construction is available, or?
Well, no, the, the basis of this, and, and Mr. Whitley can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, there's a thing out there called the Means Cost Estimating Manual. Most architects subscribe to it, and, uh, they gather up the bid prices for that type of a membrane in this region with, uh, the variations that go into a small town, and that's where you derive those type of costs. Uh, that, that's not a bid price, of course, um, but, but yeah, there's, there's a scientific basis in those differentials.
Thank you.
It's not, uh, time of year so much at all.
Your Honor.
Judy?
I guess, I have a question, um, and maybe it's more of a statement. What is our long-term goal with this building? I mean, I pulled off the Gateway Borough assessment, and the building's only valued at one point three million dollars. So if we have HVAC problems, electrical problems, the rest of the building's failing, I mean, I get the roof, but what's our plan? I mean, do we have a plan for this building? If we keep putting money into this, this reminds me of Shoemaker. Uh, well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, it's one point three million dollars, that's what, I mean, granted, that's two thousand and nine. And I get that the roof's leaking, I mean, we had that conversation, and I appreciate a whole questions. And, and before I came, I thought, well, you know, I'm going to print this off and see what it is. I mean, are we, are we really doing the right thing? I mean, have we had that conversation about what we're going to do with this?
I think the conversation we have is, what can we do to keep it from falling down immediately?
Right, but if our plan is to eventually, you know, get rid of it.
We had a presentation, um, with new design plans and stuff. I can't remember how many gazillions of dollars it was going to entail.
I think the council just said, let's keep it, I mean, function, I mean, a functional building by the roof and electricity and go from there. Nobody wanted to put anything else into it. It's the last time we were, last time we talked about, Bob?
Yeah, um, through the discussion, we, we, we figured that, you know, replacement of the building right now is ideal for the tourism industry and potential revenues for the museum. The building is basically sound for a foundation. We have a leaky roof that we'd have to replace now, and it caused some lighting issues and electrical issues that we, we looked at. We do need to take a longer term look at the building, but I think that it's appropriate for its use, and I think that over time, we can, uh, continue to improve on it and, uh, continue to utilize the building as it is. Um, that's going to take some work over a period of time, and it's not going to all happen at once. But I think by piecing all this thing together, we'll avoid trying to find a place to build another museum if that's our choice of the community. And none of those things are, are cheap, and the monies from the state are, are less and less. So I think that if we want to have a, a quality museum in Ketchikan, I think the location is appropriate, and I think we're just going to have to work on it as we can and, and come up with a plan to our building division, our public works division, is what's the next step? What do we have to do next? And, um, I just don't think the community is ready to go out and borrow for a new building anytime, anytime soon.
Well, I agree with that, but at the same time, if we put all this money into a building that's failing, I mean, are we going to end up spending more than what the building's worth, is what I'm wondering.
I think in the lifetime of the house I'm living in, I'm going to spend more on it than it's worth.
Matt, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I, I have all the same concerns that Judy has. This, this building is, is one that, I mean, as, as a child, I have very fond memories going over to the library and for the museum. And I don't want to see it disappear, but in the end, the city, you know, you know, what Bob's saying, what he said, I think that's kind of what, how Bob feels about the building. But we haven't decided that. It's just like the budget discussion. We're going to, every gym we get together, we look at Carl and say, yeah, this is what we want to do. We need to change this, and we never change it. We keep bouncing this around. I'm, I'm concerned about dumping a bunch of money into this building if a year down the road, we decide to sell it. I understand the need to do the roof. I understand the need to do the wiring. But I think the more important aspect here is we need to decide if this is going to stay as a central location or as something that we're going to utilize for the tourism industry, because if it is, we need to make drastic changes to that building. First and foremost, we need to really fix the restrooms. We need to make them completely new, and it's, the other aspect is, is we need to look at the museum staff and say, what do you need to make it to be more functional for your needs? But these are all things that we have to do. We've had all the studies, we're just delaying the inevitable discussion. And I, I don't want to spend money to put a new roof on something, and then if we're going to tear the roof off. That's what frustrates me. Are we going to tear the new roof off? It depends on where we want the museum to go. Are we going to keep it where it's at right now and just keep it with a flat roof and not adjust that roof? If, if not, then I say we do it, but, um, I, I, I'm loathe to spend the money. I know we have to do it, I know we have to protect the building, but I'm loathe to spend it if we're just going to decide in six months we don't want the building.
I don't think there's been any talk to sell the building.
Well, we haven't made the discussion, we haven't had, had the discussion yet. We've had four opinions around the building, but we've never voted and given direction. Four opinions around the building, but we've never voted and given direction.
Well, I thought, I thought, when we decided to go after the roof and electric, we decided that, yeah, we wanted to keep the building usable as a museum. And none of us wanted to pump any big bucks into it. We just wanted to fix it up and go from there, and down the road, we'll see what we can do. That's what I remember hearing, because I know Dick was very adamant against throwing a lot of money into it. But we just wanted to fix the roof, make sure electricity was working right, let it use it in the museum and go down.
But that was, there was not a majority opinion on it. And I think that's, we keep sitting here, and everyone has their opinion, but we haven't made any motions. The museum staff is sitting here waiting for us to make a move.
Well, then let's get ourselves an item on the first meeting in March, and we'll decide. Everybody have a consensus on what we want to do with the building.
Your Honor, should we defer this to-
No, I think we can move ahead with this, since I think everybody had, we've decided that we need to do something with the roof, but-
Yeah, Lou, I guess I would probably respectfully disagree with Matt. I thought we made a clear, clear decision. We were not going to build a new building. And we were not going to sell that building. It was plumb adequate for a museum, but we were, over time, we would build it to work long, and you could, Katie would have to go back and look at the minutes. But I thought we made a pretty doggone clear decision that we weren't going to put ten million dollars into a new museum. And we knew we were going to have to deal with some of those things like lights and water, I mean, the roof. And a lot of us would like to go to that pitched roof, but it's a lot more expensive, and it's got structural problems to deal with. So I think the way we're headed is the way we intended, and we're never all going to agree. It's going to end up in a four to three vote or five to two vote or something. With that said, I got a question for Cliff, and we're talking about the low slope roof. Inside, I guess there's some little walls coming up there, and the roof's inside of those little, what do you want to call it?
It's called, well, some, if it's a vertical wall, it's called a parapet.
Okay.
And this particular one is called a mansard. It sticks up above the ceiling, if you will. But you won't see the low slope roof.
No, because it's down below, down here. So all I'm saying is make that slope, that roof slope as much as you can. Inside there, and you can do it by however you build that up with that phone.
There you go.
He's giving you a technical response of duh.
I'll let the architect do his job. He knows.
Well, the steeper we can get that slope inside here, the better we're going to get that water out there. And I don't care if it's too low pitched, then you end up-
There is an appropriate pitch for every one of these. That said, if we're going to build it too high, we spend a lot of money that we don't get anything back on. It needs the appropriate slope. And the other, the slope is made from insulation, so I don't want to spend a hundred thousand dollars on insulation just for a little more. And I'm very confident in this turning out the way it should.
I recommend that we approve this motion. Then if we have four hands, let's have it on the March first, the first meeting in March agenda, so everybody can make sure we're all on the same page of what we want to do with this building. So when we come away from it, we know, everybody knows what's going on and what direction we want us to go in. Bob?
Did we have an evaluation of the building at one time brought to us? I think you did. Do we have that recent after the-
You bet.
Council for review?
Call the motion on, I mean, call the roll on the motion.
Harris. Zingy. No. Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Kus.
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. Do we have four hands to bring that onto the agenda? That's good. We'll have that on the first meeting in March. And then that brings us down to seven eight five vacant positions and potential retirees. Mr. Kus.
Thank you, Your Honor. I brought this up for, I guess, from some things I've-
Can you do the motion first? Yeah, there's a generic motion there. Yeah, so we have it up on the table.
Where's the table? Oh, it's laying on the table?
No, 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 no.
There was a current-
Oh, is it there? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the same motion.
Yeah, there is one.
Oh, okay. I move that the City Council staff takes action relative to the positions vacancies in the old retirement report that the Human Resources Director dated February twenty, two thousand fourteen is determined appropriate by the City Council.
Second. Move it in second. Okay, Dick, go ahead. Stick away.
Anyway, I guess a number of people, including a couple of council people, were not real happy with the fact that the council did not cut much of the budget, the budget time last, previous year. And I know that if we've done the sales tax, everybody keeps thinking, well, next year, we're going to stick some more on to the sales tax. And in talking to some other people, there are some feelings that maybe we could manage the budget better by looking at vacancies and not filling them on a on a basis that we've looked at it pretty carefully and said, well, hey, we're going to live without them. So this is why I brought this back forward, or brought it forward, and I know that on the list that we've just been given tonight, there's quite a few positions there, but and I don't have a clue on which one of them's we should deal with or how we should deal with, but I think that we almost ought to come to an agreement that we're going to have more or less a hiring freeze, and each one of these positions that become vacant, they come back to us with a justification. And I would particularly be looking at, and the feedback I've been getting, especially a, I'll quote, middle management type. The people on the ground do the work. They got to get the work done. And I'm going to give you just my opinion and maybe some where I've gotten feedback is, it doesn't help the city budget, but it helps KPU budget is, do we really need to replace the systems engineer manager? And I think we need a justification on why to replace it. And it's not laying anybody off, and we're close, may have to be whittled a little bit to get the job done. Another two of them, there's two police officers sitting there, and actually, the manager last, at budget time, said, let two police officers go. So, and along with the police officer thing, I think we need to reevaluate the fact that we threw out the management evaluation of the police department, because it may give us some ideas on how we could save some money. And the twenty thousand dollar study, which, like Gary and KJ, if it sits on a wall, is not worth the paper it's printed on. It's our challenge to make it stay off the wall and work. And it's worked, I think, with the HR department. I think we've got some improvements by that management study we did. We've got some people, some training, we've got better employees because of it. Another example I would throw out here, and somebody can take a ball bat to me when they get done, but the grant, contract grant administrator in Public Works, I guess I have a feeling that the deputy engineer, whatever the title is, can probably handle that job no more than what I see coming down the pike as contract-type work, and so, but we need an evaluation of those things, and those are just kind of my opinion. But I think, as you guys float around with your ideas, we need some feedback so that we can make some smart moves, and with a little bit of luck, maybe we can save ourselves a half a million, three hundred million dollars in vacancies, so we don't have to jack up the sales tax or the property tax next year, because I see people thinking it's coming. And that's my whole goal, is we've got to get in the middle of some stuff.
Judy?
Well, Your Honor, with all due respect, I sort of just agree with Mr. Kus. To me, we have the budget process. My understanding of our job at City Council is not to micromanage, and if we think these things should happen, we should go directly to the manager. We had that opportunity. We had all those discussions during budget. We made the decision not to do that. And that sort of brings me to, you know, as a new council person, it would have been nice to have, again, and I'm sorry, but a policy session. I think that that would be more valuable to us as a council. I mean, sometimes we get complacent, and we don't know what our role is, maybe. I know that I question what my role is sometimes here. And I just think that would be more valuable than revisiting decisions we've already made, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, on the, I mean, we just sort of heard as you go, I guess. And I understand where Dick's coming from, but I mean, you know, the management already balances jobs and what they want to do, and Carl doesn't fill them all. I mean, he's had jobs open for a while, or pulls them off before budget time. At budget time, we set a policy of no, the same amount of money we spent the year before. Management brought it to us, and the council and their policy decide not to eliminate those jobs. So there's the, there's the direction, and there's the policy, and instead, we went after revenue. It's up to, I mean, the council, you know, if we come to next budget time, you know, if we're going to have to cut something. The main thing you're going to cut to save anybody's jobs, I mean, either you do it or you don't. And I know it's tough, because some people are in the jobs, some jobs aren't filled, but that's the only way it works. I mean, that's what we're, they put us on here to make those tough decisions. If the council felt like this done, that wasn't the right move, so they didn't. I don't, I know we're going to talk about the budget schedule next, so people have more time to look at it or figure out what they want to do, but it really comes down to the budget is, you know, if you don't want to spend money and you want to change it, the best policy for the council is to make a motion. And people used to always give me a bad time when I was in your council seat, because I made all the motions. Well, I made the motion so I could direct traffic and get it my way. And that's, that's council policy. I mean, that's the way it works. And so, I mean, if you want something done and you don't like where it's going, make a motion and try to get four people to follow you. I guess I don't, I know our policy, I mean, we're a policy board, and the budget's our biggest policy. And we did those things, and this is the way it turned out this time, and not everybody's happy enough, and I just don't, you know, you can hash about all this stuff, and I'm not talking about anything in specific, but when you want to do something with the city and make a change, budget time is the thing that counts. All I say is make a motion, and four votes wins, and four votes directs the traffic. Matt?
Your Honor, I just want to jump on your bandwagon as well. We have all these discussions, and the policy we set forth was that we do not want to reduce services anymore. I think this morning's traffic was a perfect example. I don't know how many people were out at eight in the morning driving through that snow, like going up Jefferson. I've got a four-wheel-drive vehicle, and I started spinning. And we have just enough streets guys to cover that stuff, but that dumped quickly. They got out as quickly as they could. They took care of the streets. They did a great job. But I couldn't imagine if we held up hiring one of those guys in the middle of November just because we're trying to evaluate that position, whether we want it or not, in the snowfall times, and we can't get our streets quicker. I can't sit here and imagine waiting to hire these two police officers while they're trying to make sure they have their shifts designed. And they have their shifts designed around the number of police officers they have. It's, yeah, when I first got on, I asked a simple question. Do we have a process, or does anyone have a process, for review? All I wanted to know was internal. And I was promptly, promptly told that's not our purpose. I don't believe going in and during the year and reviewing every decision for every, every opening and saying whether or not it is a prudent position is our job. It's, that's our, our job is to set it all during that budget time. And after that, we let staff and the professionals run their departments in a professional manner, because that's why we hired you.
Anybody else? Dick?
Yeah, Lou, I'm going to disagree with Matt. And I think he may have said this earlier in this meeting. We sit here and we change, we make decisions as we go along sometimes, like arguing about the library building, museum. And I think it's really proven if this council starts looking to next year's budget by controlling expenditures, and we're not doing it. And you look at some of these positions, we're saying we need them, and we're going to review them. Give me a break. Some of those have been open since October of two thousand thirteen, and some of them even further than that. They aren't even being filled. So-
Sometimes they do that intentionally. Sometimes they do that intentionally.
Well, and that's, that's okay, but it's, next year, it comes along, and here is budget time, and we're saying, okay, hold the line on the budget again, just like we did a year ago. And all of a sudden, we're going to fire twenty people. And we didn't buy it, because that wasn't our instructions. But we could have been given a list of potential vacancies, and said we're going to reduce the budget by this amount. But, you know, I agree with KJ. Come next fall, we're going to want another half percent on taxes, because there's something else going on. And we've got to increase taxes or reduce expenditures. And it's our baby, and I disagree wholeheartedly that if not micromanaging, you better be a smart manager. You're going to be in trouble. And we're, in essence, we may be policy, but we're also managers, and we've got to look at it. I'll leave it at that.
Anybody else? All right. I don't think we have something to vote on. We had a discussion-
Do you want me to make a motion?
If you want to make a motion for something. Well, we made the motion, but it wasn't, it just gives you-
It was direct, right? So now do you need direction?
If you want, if you want to make some direction, I guess. Did you want to add anything? I mean, go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, I just, I move that that vacancies come back in front of this council for with a justification for fill them, with the idea that we're, yeah, just leave it at that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for the vote.
Move in second. Anybody knows what we're voting on? Interested? Okay, call the roll.
West?
No.
Olsen?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kus?
Yep.
Harris?
No.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Motion fails three to four. Any other motions? All right, that brings us down to seven six, eight six budget schedule. That's yours, Matt.
Your Honor, the City Council staff takes such action relative to the finance director's budget timeline reports dated February twelve, two thousand fourteen is determined appropriate by the City Council.
Move in seconded. Matt?
The last, actually, it's almost been every year we've had either public comment or council members to say that we need to get on the budget earlier. So I just, I don't want to have the discussion, and hopefully, we won't have it again. And so I just, I threw out an idea, and it doesn't have the merit is, well, whether it has merit or not is up to everybody else here. But it's just a general thing, and it was something I threw out. And I think Bob has, you know, Bob Newell has a lot of very valid points in what he posted in his, in his words, but I think if we want to change the budget process, now is our time to change it. Whether it's, we're meeting a little earlier to give the manager general direction, whether we're, I mean, I think some of these things, some of the budget items that really we don't ever change, mayor and council, maybe we can act on early ahead of time so that they're already set. We have a CIP list that maybe we can look at, because we're just projecting which projects we'd want to, that we'd focus on next budget. I know I know it might not come at an opportune time, but maybe we can schedule that to benefit with it. In looking at my, my thing, I tried to make it so that, you know, Public Works was last. It was in October. Hopefully, most of their work was completed. But there are several of these budgetary items, especially, you know, your mayor, manager, attorney, and the clerk. Those ones don't change much, and maybe we can tackle some of those earlier and set the direction. It's just an idea, but we seem to keep saying we want to change it, so why not have a discussion?
Hi, Bob, can you come up? After I got here, I think I talked to Bob about some things that might be realistic for him to be able to get things to us sooner. And Bob, I can't even remember. You were talking about maybe doing the KPU budget, getting it to us early. What were those ideas you had, or what you thought we could do different?
Well, I think that would be one thing that we could do, that would not, sort of tremendous amount of pressure on staff. We certainly would be willing to try it, and that would be to try and get the KPU budget to the council about two weeks before we normally present the entire budget. we normally present the entire budget for what's in the gap and if you just do the KPU budget, third week in October, and that would give you about two weeks to discuss and review the KPU budget before we bring the general government budget to the council in the first meeting in November. I don't know if that's enough time that you like to have, but I think that would give you an extra two weeks. So you could have two, two meetings in October to discuss the KPU budget, maybe two, possibly three meetings in November, we start tackling the general government budget right after it's delivered to the council and then you could pick up, um, you know, two or three meetings in December.
So he would, go ahead, Matt.
Bob, one of my concerns this year, I mean, it comes down to the sales tax, it was, the, the revenue aspect of the budget has just been decided for you guys. And when you look at building your budgets, um, and making sure that departments can move ahead, would it be, and I, I understand your reasoning for, for going so late and I completely understand that, but wouldn't an earlier finish to it, if we could get it to it, to you be better for staff and management as a whole to know what the, what that was?
Well, I sat down with our, and talked with our budget team and, and get some feedback from them and they were all unanimous that they, they didn't really want to do the process starting sooner and they felt that they were comfortable with the process we have in place right now. But the other thing to think about is, um, but right now in the middle of year end closing and that's about a two to three month process, hopefully we can speed it up at some point in the future. So when you're coming off of year end, the auditorium, um, the first week in May, you finally have to have them bring it to the council, that gives staff maybe a couple of, about a month, month and a half, three days before we start working on the budget. And if we were to start, um, try to get the budget to the council in June, we'd have to start in the middle of March, so you're talking about trying to do year end closing, do a budget at the same time, that would be, that'd be impossible for us to do.
I was thinking it, um, I mean, so we're making some changes, make sure by June we give them direction, maybe June, I think we do give direction like we did last year. Um, and then get the, um, KPU budget earlier. I mean, you don't have to, we can start meetings in October, we can, uh, talk about it through November, we don't have, we just have to have it approved by the end of December. So that gives plenty of time to, um, I think extra time for looking at the, um, KPU budget. Um, and that's a start of trying to get something earlier if anybody's interested in doing that. I'm willing to work, um, with the management, try to do that. Everybody's been talking about more time looking at it, if we can get that, look at the KPU to have some meetings, have a direction of where we're going and get into the city one, we don't even have to, I mean, we've got the KPU behind us and we can really focus even more on the city budget. Any other inputs?
What about doing CIP list a little earlier? Since that's kind of a projection for projects at that point.
That's a possibility, uh, but again, finance really doesn't put CIP together, we require the input from the other departments. And, well, public works, for example, they're incredibly busy, I mean, all year round, but their busy time is from, you know, they start planning in March, April, construction season, June, July, August, September. They're a big part of the CIP. And I don't know if they would have time to, to help us with something to get it. I know under the current, because right now it is very challenging for them because they're coming off their busy season and we have to have stuff from them by early September. And that's very difficult. They try, they do a good job, but it, it's tough.
So is anybody interested in trying to get the KPU budget that early time? Do we have four hands? Go ahead, do the, okay, let's start with that, Bob, and see if that relieves some of the, um, work on the, so we can have more time on the city budget. Thank you. Thanks, Matt. That brings us down to vouchers. Um, Daily News, $298.
Your Honor, I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $298.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Coos?
Yep.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Severtson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us down to manager report. Dave?
No, sir.
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions on manager report? City clerks file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorneys file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items? I think we've mentioned a couple things already. Matt, home party?
Um, with the parking removed on Stedman, I'd like us to discuss the possibility of removing, uh, ticketing for parking, for parking in downtown until the end of that project on Stedman when that parking is restored.
We'll make that on the next meeting. Um, yes?
And along with, on that, can we discuss the, and I haven't thought it out all the way, but I've been talked to by a couple people about, uh, was it parking permits that are $30, that have been $30 for 20 years?
Do you want to bring up, um, something on, um...
Whether we want to, I hate to say increase, but, you know, we're 35...
Is there an interest on the council to look at our cost of our parking permits?
I'm just curious.
Let's have four hands. Not interested in that. One, two, three. Um, one thing on the parking things, I've had people request, because I think you can get them for how much a year and how long, is it, um, three months or something?
$300 a year.
$300, what's the, there's only two you can buy, correct? And I've had other people wondering if you can get them for, um, three months or six months. I'll bring that up sometime, I'll, I'll talk to you. It's not on the agenda. Uh, mayor, council, comment?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Could I, um, add a future agenda item, the emergency, um, planning, um, which includes the Alaska Shield, um, project?
You want to discuss it?
Yes, sir.
Do we have four people want that? One, two, three, four. Okay, it's on the, anybody else? Mayor, council comments? Dick?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yeah.
I have a question about the committees that were asked to participate in the council members. Are they mandatory?
No.
That we do them?
No. I'm not gonna come and beat you up or anything to them.
I think that they, um, offer us as council a very valuable opportunity for insight into specific, um, community, I don't want to say advance, but community, um, things going on in our communities that we can then bring back and share with the council overall. Um, we get a lot of good information from the various, um, agencies, committee, and staff, but I think that having our outside involvement lends a different perspective to those things as well. But with that said, um, I know a lot, I know all of us are putting a lot of time in on these committees as well, and I just think that we should keep that in mind, um, so that when things come up that may affect or impact the committees, the members of the council who are on the committees can be kept apprised in a timely manner and, um, brought into the discussion. It just would be appreciated.
So we're discussing something?
Just committee involvement. You know, when we're putting our time and powers into these committees as council members, if staff is aware of different things that are going on with these different, um, committees...
Involve the committee, council member.
Right. If the council member that is appointed, you know, whether it's the Ketchikan Visitors' Bureau, whichever, if they could, I don't know if there's an email list or some kind of, um, way of communications can be sent out regarding them, um, it'd just be nice to be kept apprised of things that are going on behind the scenes that affect these committees that we're not really hearing about.
Till the last second. Sounds good. Good direction. Matt?
Um, Katie, can we get, can we find out if we actually did decide on the museum or if it was just people? Can you research that?
If we did what?
If we did decide on, give direction for the museum?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I really do appreciate Amanda Mitchell and her group. I appreciate all the work that they're putting in. As a rule, I generally try not to ask questions during the public comment time just because it's their time and not mine. But the water, the water issue is incredibly interesting. I mean, this has been an issue that as I came on the council in 2009, we were putting the finishing touches on the plan. And we didn't hear a single peep from anybody about it at that point. And now, and now we're hearing from some people, um, including some members of the public who are our community monetary watchdogs. And, I mean, I, I hate to say it, but this is a $9 million project, we bonded for it. If we go and abandon that project, are we gonna get a waiver on having to go out and spend the extra money from these individuals? Are they gonna back us in doing it? And I, 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 it, it's, it's a little frustrating when you, as a council, go through and do all this and you put it all out there, just like we did the Harvard fund and we had 7% turnout. We, we have a process, it was a 10-year process and it was a long time to talk. Like I said, I really appreciate all the work. There's a lot of information here. But I, I just urge people to get involved a lot sooner. Lastly, uh, the Akela funding issue, I really thought we could have stepped that tonight. I'm worried that we're gonna, you know, the, the original ask was for $300,000, well, if they have more money, well, they, they need more money, they're gonna come back to us. I, I wanted to send the $300,000 tonight, plus a waiver of all the staff fees and all the, um, fire marshal fees and all that. That stuff we can do. And then if they need additional funding, they can go out for it. I did not see the need to defer, so, um, that's why I asked for that break so I could catch people as they walked out. Thank you.
You bet. Um, Marty?
Um, my comments are along the lines of Matt's about the water project. I really do appreciate the obvious time and work that, um, this Mitchell and her group have put into this. I was on the council when we started this 10 years ago and we really have had very little input from the public until very recently. I know that, that Judy's done a lot of research in this and she was telling me about the things that she's found out, um, that there are a lot of communities that have not had adverse impacts by having this. Um, I, I understand their concern, uh, it's not something that, that we have done lightly, it's something that we have been required to do. And I just would like to tell her that I appreciate the, the work that she's done, but in, at the end of the day, we have to proceed with this project and we have to rely on the experts that we've hired for this. And CH2M Hill is a, a very well, highly regarded, uh, experts in this and I'm satisfied that they have done the research to give us a project that is not dangerous to the community.
Your Honor, I forgot one. Just along those lines, a lot of people on fish, I have amphibians. Um, as we approach that date, if we can start saying this is gonna be the date, that would really, I think, benefit a lot of those individuals because just saying sometime this spring, um, there are people like me that wait till the last minute to do things and I would hate to wait till the last minute plus three and, and watch my salad.
Marty, you have anything else? Bob?
Um, no, I think of a good, good discussion and, uh, I'm like Marty, we brought this project on years ago, we had diligent discussion, we had it before the council, did a lot of homework on it and we did listen to the experts. The other thing is, um, I guess I could invite Alman to make a more detailed presentation on it, but in the paper you read where they had a lockdown drill at the school and they talked about the numbers of shootings at schools and back in 2014, already there's 16. And, uh, that, that disturbed me. And, uh, but they ran drills, they have personnel that are capable of doing that and I think it went very well. They're gonna be doing more of those, but, uh, I'm glad to see that they're being proactive and they trained for it. Not that you ever want something like that to happen, but you gotta be prepared, so I'd like to thank the department for their work.
Thanks, Bob. KJ?
I just want to say volunteer, I went up to the library this morning and read two little books to little kids.
All right.
And do it just to, just, I didn't have to hold the kids, I didn't have to make sense of, I mean, 'cause I was scared. I deal with 21 and over all my life and now I've got these little munchkins up there, but it was fun. It was, and if you guys got any spare time, not necessarily the library, but if you got an extra hour a week, find a way to volunteer some of your time, because, I mean, especially working with kids, it's just, wow, it was just really fun. And that's it.
Thank you, KJ. Um, I have, um, first I want to thank Bob and, um, Trey out of SEPA. They put together a letter, um, to the governor, I can remember the governor last week, um, he was really wanting to know how, where, where we're going in our development of power and hydropower and how Mahoney fit in and, um, I, the letter's great, I'm gonna save that letter so I know exactly what we're doing, so I don't, it sounds stupid, I can always have it, so I really appreciate that and, um, it's up there by now, I imagine. That's perfect. And then, um, I was at the, um, ballet fundraiser dinner tonight and I got to sit with Nathan Jackson, um, he had another medical issue, another heart attack and, um, thank goodness he's back, he's doing really good, but, um, I'm talking to him, it sounds like our ego might be a little delayed, but, um, I think he's already working on plans to, if there's some, like, he has to do something to get something up there and tell them, um, he's working on, but I'm just glad he's healthy and he's feeling good and he's, um, back with us. I hate to see him, I think the second one, so, um, but he was eating good and healthy. With the, water does, plant does start, we start putting the chloramide in there, um, I think we should make sure we have a date. I will take the first sip and make sure it's, um, tastes good. Hopefully I don't fall over. But no, we'll just, uh, we'll keep going on the process and I appreciate everybody's input. Um, does anybody have anything else? All right, good work, everybody. That motion adjourned?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.